Welcome everyone, today is Tuesday, July 16th, 2019. This is a meeting of the Acushnet Road Race Selectmen. I'll rise please for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda which has been previously distributed?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We've got, the agenda says, are minutes of April 8th, which... Were those previously distributed?
Unfortunately, not.
Okay, so we'll, let's hold those the next time, yeah, let's repeat the whole thing next time. Yeah, okay, all right. So, meeting mail, first item is a letter of interest requesting to be appointed to the Cultural Council by Charlene Korea.
Make a motion to appoint Charlene Korea to the Cultural Council.
And I'll second.
Any discussion?
Thank you for putting your name out there and coming on board.
Yes.
Thank you.
Because we need members.
You do need members. You still have members, nice.
I am, I am.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I passes. We've got a letter from the Acushnet Road Race Committee requesting approval of their event with some changes in the course. It looks like that was reviewed by both the police chief and the fire chief, and it seems they're both comfortable with what's requested.
That is correct.
Thank you, chief. And I think they both signed off on it as well, I think.
Motion to approve the 39th Annual Acushnet Road Race.
And I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I passes. Next item on the agenda is a requesting approval for an event called Pedal for the Path for Acushnet. I think that's an event that has happened in the past as well.
Second one.
And also, the chiefs approved that event as well, the path, and... So is there a motion to approve that?
Make a motion to approve the Pedal for the Path request.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
We don't have sign-offs on this one, though, I don't believe, I don't have that one.
No, I had sign-offs on one, but not, are you aware of both events, chief and...
Yes, they have, they have signed off.
They have signed off.
Yes, I got this copy right here.
I think I only got...
For the Pedal to the Path.
We haven't got signature after.
Yes.
As long as, I always look for the two chiefs to sign off.
They both have taken it, just wait for your...
Is everyone in favor?
In favor? Yes. Aye.
Aye, okay. Appointments, we have none. Old business, we've got the comparison communities discussion, and I know something's been circulated on that, so... Mr. Gaspar, you've taken the lead on that, so why don't you, why don't you start discussion on this topic?
I did, so I tried to keep the scope as comparable as we could. However, by using the Division of Local Services website is where I obtained, I'm trying to find population comparable with plus or minus 20%. EQV per capita, plus or minus 20%, and per capita income, plus or minus 20%, it was almost impossible. So I had to broaden that scope to plus or minus 25%, and I went to 50% on population, so I went down to 5,000 and up to 15,000. And I got a lot of good, good towns to involve in that. I would like to try to keep it...
This is different.
I would like to try to keep it, you know, as equal as I can, so I, what I presented to the board today was four communities from Plymouth County, four communities from Bristol County, all in that range. Fahaven didn't make the list when you plug in the plus or minus 25% bracket on EQV on population, because their population's 16,140, but their EQV per capita and their EQV, I mean, their per capita income fall within the 25%. So everything you're looking at is plus or minus 25% for EQV and per capita income. Population, I had to expand out a little bit, and the reason why I wanted to include Fahaven, I thought it was important for another one to be included from Bristol County, because there not a lot popped up for Bristol County, is it's geographically, it's nearer, so we do need communities that are geographically around us to do comparisons with. We can't just go out and pick towns in Worcester County because they're favorable in salaries, if that's how you want to look at it, and low income and all that stuff. So I tried to be as complete as I can. What I found was the eight towns, Berkeley, Dayton, Fahaven, Freetown, Halifax, Hanson, Whitman, Carver. What my list has in common is Mr. Noble gave me a list of what the DOR says would be comparable. So out of that, Plymouth County, Carver, Whitman, Halifax, fall on the list, three of those, out of the four that I used. Bristol County, Dayton and Freetown fall on the list. They only gave us two in Bristol County, actually, the common, the Department of the Reverend gave us, the noble, only two out of all these communities represent Bristol County. Left to decide would be Fahaven, Hanson, which the our wage classification uses, so the information's there, and Berkeley's the only one that's left to decide whether or not we would want to use it or not. It does fit, I don't know why DLS, the Division of Local Services, would not plug that in. I have a phone call incident, but I haven't heard back on why, when I plug in the plus or minus 25%, it's not bringing out Berkeley in the list, but you can go back and backcheck everything that I've done. It's all there in front of you, it's all organized, so Bristol County's listed first, Plymouth County's second. It captures a broad area around the town of Acushnet. I mean, you're even looking at Halifax and Hanson, which is kind of over towards the coast, but it's in Plymouth County, so I tried to be fair and use equal amounts from Plymouth and Bristol County. Now, if you want to start moving on the outskirts of Worcester County, I have plenty more to list from. I got a whole big, long list over here that we can go through, but I kind of concentrated on these, and I thought it would be pretty fair seeing how the DOR's list, five out of the eight that I used are on the DOR's list. So, list, I think it's, and the other, two out of the other three are already done in our wage classification, being Fahaven and Hanson, so it's already there, it's not like I'm just making these things up. The company used a couple of them that were, that are left hanging, the DOR says that these five out of my eight are comparable, so I know I did something right in the research, so we can just, you know, move from there. I know Mr. DeRoche gave a list, so let Mr. DeRoche speak on his.
Mr. DeRoche, go, please.
Yes, I based my list on a number of factors, town budgets. Well, first, I chose geographically, considering the employees, how far they want to travel to go to work. So I stuck with Bristol, Plymouth, and I added a couple of towns from Worcester County, all within about an hour's drive.
So this, this list is your, so you...
That's correct.
All these names, okay.
That's correct, I chose the 12. You know, some of it was based on what was provided by Mr. Noble from the state, but I tried to make all my comparisons based on the town budgets, the per capita income, the tax revenue, and the EQV. Surprising how we rank on EQV, probably the lowest, other than Blackstone in Worcester County, out of all the 12 that I chose, so, but it was based on those, those factors. So, use the information provided, you know, from the websites that I researched, and I've come up with, with, I believe, 12 towns or 11 towns that we can whittle down from and choose from. You know, but they all fall in line with what, you know, has been provided and what, what we've been agreeing with to a certain extent.
Mr. Noble provided a list that I thought was your final list, and it's, it's pretty close, but I think it's changed a little bit.
Yeah, a couple of hours, we talked Friday, maybe Mr. Noble met Friday when he gave me this. Well, he actually gave me all 351 communities, and I said, "What the heck is that?", I could, I mean...
I wanted to be thorough.
He's not going out, I mean, I gotta, I gotta all plug in, I mean, when I started playing around with plus or minus, so this, this chart right here that I got in my hand that lists 34 communities, plus or minus 25% per capita and EQV per capita, however, I had to go plus or minus 50% on population, and out of all 351, it only gave me 34. So roughly, less than 10% is what the state's telling me that it's comparable on that, throughout the whole Commonwealth. So I wasn't really looking to go into Worcester County, and Norfolk, and Suffolk County, and all these other counties that, you know, the way I look at it is, if you're gonna go to Boston for a job, have a hey, they go to Boston and work in Boston. I don't think I want to be compared to towns around Boston, so I kind of stood away from that, and I kind of gave it, you know, probably a 35-mile range. Most of my communities are all within 35 miles of the town of Acushnet, which is basically a half an hour, 40-minute ride, anything more than that. You want to commute that, travel and deal with traffic and everything else, and I can't match your salary that close, I don't think it's that important.
I mean, I did, so I get the spreadsheet with, so it lists the towns, it lists the counties, and it gives us six different metrics, the EQV, and I'm not sure how that's calculated, town budget, population, road miles, income per capita, and average tax bill. And what I, what I did is I sorted on each of those metrics, and then found all of the communities within 10% of Acushnet's numbers. So we limit, 244 communities eliminates about, eliminates all the stuff in the western part of the state, but sorted around Acushnet and went 10% above and below for each of the metrics, for each of the metrics. So sorted on EQV, sorted on town budget, sorted on road miles, and then found the communities with within 10% of Acushnet's numbers. So if our, if our budget was $100, all the communities with a budget of 90 to 110, I found those.
That's basically what I did.
And then I tried to find the communities that we, you know, were, were matched closely in each of those metrics, and believe it or not, the company, the, the community we matched closest to is a, is a, is a town called Salisbury, which is, I'm not sure we're really comparable to Salisbury, Salisbury's sort of up north...
Yeah, North Shore.
North Shore, near Gloucester, and right on the New Hampshire line, but their town budget's very close to ours, their population's close to ours, their income per capita's very close to ours, and their average tax bill's very close to ours. You know, at the end of the day, we should compare ourselves to, but, I mean, the other communities that I, I think maybe we should think about, and I, what I'm gonna suggest is we...
What's the, what's the, what's the population you said? Because I, I used the plus or minus 25% per capita EQV, plus or minus 50% on population, and I don't have Salisbury on my list at all.
Salisbury's got a population of 9,261 people.
What's the EQV?
EQV's, I mean, they didn't match up well on the EQV.
Okay, so that's why...
There were four, four of the six.
This program idea of Division of Local Services automatically kicks you out?
No.
If your criteria's aren't on the ones you plug?
They matched on town budget, population, income per capita, and average tax bill, they did not match on, they did not match on road miles, and they did not match on EQV.
You know, road miles matter in police departments, in public safety, and DDW, that's road miles where matter, when you're talking positions, and you, you said, you know, "I'm not really sure what EQV is", it's, it's important because it's a total taxable base, i.e. residential, commercial, industrial, and personal, okay, property, to make up of your tax base. It says, "A municipality with a high equalized value can more easily raise taxes for public services, especially if its EQV per capita ratio is higher." So the disparity between your EQV ratio, the higher you go, obviously, they can afford to pay more and provide better services, I guess, is what they're, they're saying in services. I interpret that as pays.
So, the communities that I, so Salisbury may or may not be comparable, but a couple that I came up with that I think might be, the town of Stowe, which is up 495, the town of Holbrook, which is actually sort of Whitman-Bridgewater area, you know, maybe...
Whitman's on both of our lists, so...
Whitman is on both, Stowe and Holbrook, I'm sorry, I didn't say Whitman.
Can you provide a list to us?
I'm going to, yeah, I'm going to, but what I would suggest is...
Kind of look at your list, and then we can go through, do you have? I'm looking at your screen, are the yellow ones the ones you would prefer to use?
The yellow ones, the yellow ones, I think were on your first list, and the yellow ones were, and I'm, I'm good with all of those, I think those compare pretty well to us. There were a couple that were on an early list, I saw that I didn't, Halifax, I don't think really compares as well. Fahaven doesn't really compare well, Carver doesn't really compare well, but, I mean, Carver, Carver might be fine.
That's what I was trying to say about a previous wage classification, those are all towns that you just mentioned that were used in our wage classification.
Carver, maybe, yes, but for different, for different reasons. I think we could, we could look at, we could look at a town like Fahaven and say, "We're competing with Fahaven for employees", and we could look at a town like...
Carver's very, the Carver's very close to us, actually.
And we could look at a town like Holbrook and say, "Well, Holbrook, which has got a, an average tax bill similar to ours, which has got a EQV similar to ours, which has got a population similar to ours, maybe when we're measuring other things in town government, we should look at a town like Holbrook." So, what I, what I'd suggest, gentlemen, is we each submit to Mr. Noble our list of 10, and I've not done that. Is 10 good? You've got...
I gave eight.
I think, I think...
I gave eight, but you know what, I was gonna, I was gonna make a recommendation, Mr. Chairman, and say, you know what, if we want to throw two more in there to, to use, that, I wouldn't have a problem with that. Exceeding 10 just makes things complicated for all of us.
Do you want to go 10?
Yeah, I mean, if...
10, and you've got choice to 10?
I don't have a problem with that, I really don't.
I'll submit 10, and then we'll compare those lists.
You have my submission, right, yeah, this is one of them.
Okay.
Right.
We got it.
Right, and I put in 12, but I'm open to, you know, whittle, I threw a high and a low in, you know?
Pick two, pick two that, or maybe, I'll tell you what, I'll tell you what, let me, let me submit...
I might look at two of his and want to use two of his.
Let me submit, let me submit my 10, and maybe my 10, you know, and we'll look at where we agree, where we disagree.
We'll go across the elimination.
And then we'll come up...
He's the one that gave more, so he's got to be willing to give up too.
Yep.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Well, let's see where we agree, I'll submit my 10, let's see where we agree.
Fahaven's a, is a tough call, because when you compare a population and business compared to residential, I mean, that's a huge factor.
So I'm getting a little deeper into this than I should be, and I'm looking, now I'm looking at, so you're talking about the budget, right? But, and, you know, does that matter? Yeah, I guess in some cases it does, in some cases it doesn't, but what I'm looking at now is I'm trying to look at these communities, and I'm saying, what's the split, the tax rate split? We know the town of Acushnet is 90% dependent on residential taxes, and only 10% commercial. That's where our struggle is, that's why Acushnet's tax bills are high, okay? So, when you're looking at a town like Fahaven of a 70-30, that additional 20% offsets it, but you can't, you can't stop nitpicking, you have to keep some towns geographically, because, quite honestly, I might lose people to Fahaven, I might lose people to a Matapoisa, I might lose people to a Carver, I might lose people to Freetown. So geographically, when people move, if they're, if they reside in the proximity of the town of Acushnet, I'm not talking about somebody that might come from, you know, Upton, Mass., or whatever, and they, they're traveling down here, of course, they might take a job in Worcester County, because they're from Worcester County, right? So they're probably gonna take that job, so that, that's where, you're not gonna compete with that employee, and so be it. I'm not looking to try to compete with the whole Commonwealth of Massachusetts when it comes to wages, and I don't think that's what the wage classifications there to do. I think it's, wage classification's there to give us some guidelines to see if there's a wide disparity between certain positions we're paying in the town of Acushnet with our surrounding communities we're being compared to.
So let's, why don't we all submit 10, pick 10, pick 10, so you add two.
I can throw two in.
If you can, submit 12 if you want to submit 12, and we'll, the goal is that, let's narrow it down to 10.
Yeah. And let's see which ones we all have in common.
Yep, I think we're gonna have a bunch of them in common.
Right.
Yeah. I think, I think we're probably have some in common, and...
Refine it down to the 10, or up to the 10, and...
I mean, there's a lot of commonality in here, so we can get started on data collection now.
Correct.
So, I'm happy, I just want to get started, so I appreciate what you've done here, and I could take the common ones between all three lists and start, and then you can decide, I can't finish it that fast anyway, so...
Those are the five I know I'm good with, right there.
You know, and sometimes it's...
And one from below, I know, this is probably fine.
There are little...
So these five, those are all five.
Miles and minutes away.
The only one who's... Count this as Blackstone.
Sometimes it's easy, just like...
I don't have Blackstone on my list anymore, so don't keep saying I have Blackstone.
No, no, we said you did, you didn't say you didn't.
I, I, you know what, I mean, I'm open to adding a couple more, it really doesn't matter, but I think in general, you have four from Plymouth County, four from Bristol County. I thought, I thought I did a pretty good job of putting our package together, and I must have, because Mr. DeRoche, he has all the same communities I have, but he's got three or four more than I have.
I added Rochester.
Because I stuck with eight in my head and not 10 in my head, so it's add a couple to my list, not a problem.
You know, I almost, I think some towns that are by...
I'll get, I'll get you, I'll get you, Charlie, thanks, okay. All right, so why don't we, why don't we agree for our next meeting, we're gonna, we're gonna look at, we're gonna compare lists, and we're gonna make a decision?
Yeah, we should, we should, definitely, and get the ball rolling on this, and...
All right, so we'll move that forward to the next meeting, that'll be on the agenda item for the next meeting, please. Next item under old business is the Employee Handbook, it's here for second meeting, I know I reviewed, second reading, second reading. I know I met with Mr. Noble, I...
Actually, all three of you submitted really good comments, yours particularly detailed, Roger, and I appreciate that very much.
And I send you one more red line with, okay, I'm assuming you got those, I'm, I'm good with the document as...
As presented. Okay, so what I'm looking from the board is a motion to submit to Town Council.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to submit the Employee Handbook to Town Council for their review and acceptance.
And I'll second.
Second.
And just to be frank with everybody, I'm about 60, 70% through, I did, I'm back to Mr. Noble, weren't any changes, but seeing how it's going to Town Council, excuse me, if I have anything going on, you know, there's a lot of other things going on, including 95-degree heat.
I know, I appreciate the comments if you came back, and all of you.
You know, it's, it looks pretty good, as far as I can see, it looks pretty good. There's just a lot of Mass. General Laws that I mentioned within Employee Handbook that I'm not gonna sit and read up on every Mass. General Law, because that's out of my group.
I think the suggestions I got from all three of you are great, and I was pleased, and one of the ones that I apologize, I'm gonna not give credit, but I think Roger was the one who pointed out, I forgot the severe weather policy, so I reworded that.
No, it wasn't me, it wasn't me, I'm not frightened of you.
One of you did, so I want to tell you thank you very much, and we put that in, and we got that taken care of.
All right, so motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Under new business, we have a, I'm sorry, jumping around, there's some police radio contract approval. Chief, you want to discuss that and what that is, please?
So what that is, is last fiscal year, we put $135,000 aside for a tri-town radio overhaul. So, the radio system includes Acushnet, Fahaven, and Matapoisa Police Departments, and the system that's currently being used has been there since 1995, all that equipment needs to be replaced, so we're...
95?
Yes.
Were radios invented in 95? I'm joking, of course I looked at, but it's changed dramatically since...
Correct. One of our biggest problems is that the system relies on the old copper phone lines, which are no longer supported by Verizon. So we're switching and converting over to microwave and to fiber. So, the 135 from last year, we've been working on that, I've actually been working on this project since 2010.
I remember the discussion, actually.
Right. So, we're at the point where we've got the equipment lined up, the notice to proceed has to go out, the equipment has to be purchased, and the construction needs to be completed. It would behoove us to get it done while I'm still here, because of the three chiefs, I know the most about the radio systems, because I've sat on numerous boards, so looking for your approval, so that way we can move forward with this project.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
They were digging at the police station last week, what was that all about, was that this?
No. So, Green Communities Grants, which Jim Merritt's done an excellent job, along with Merrily and Mr. Noble, we've got electric car plugins. So the EV plugins, which we have here, are being expanded to the library, police station, and...
Schools.
I just didn't know that that project was taking place, but now I know what it is.
Yep. We improved that.
We talked about that.
Yeah, we've talked about it, I just didn't know what the digging was all about.
So, you know, kudos to them, they did all the hard work.
Yeah.
We just took up his lawn.
Yeah, I noticed.
Yes, we got the bill to fix the irrigation.
Yes.
Oh, yeah?
They had irrigation pipes.
I'm sure they did.
Brain itch. But don't worry, they fixed it with duct tape.
Now, chief, you said this was between Acushnet, Fahaven, and Matapoisa?
Police Departments. Right. So this will be the backbone, and we're also going to switch over to a simulcast system. So the system we have now is definitely antiquated, it's a, only one broadcast location. So every once in a while, we end up losing all radio transmissions because of a problem that happens at that particular transmission site. So with the simulcast site, we're gonna have two sites transmitting, we'll have redundancy built in. The system should remain constant 24/7, it's a, it's a big upgrade.
You've done, you've done a great job with this, chief, and you have been working for several years on it, so I commend you in that effort. It's, it's great to finally see it come to fruition, so, you know, hopefully, everything goes off without any alarms.
Absolutely.
I'm confident it'll, it'll transition well with all the people we have working on, including yourself, so thank you very much for everything you've done with this system.
So we're approving $24,688.80 here?
Negative. $135,000 to move forward. We will be probably requiring some extra funding by the time it's all said and done, but the earmark was before we put anything out to bid or any other stuff.
The earmark was the May 2018 Article 11, $135,000.
Okay, yeah, the document we've got here is only for 20...
That's part of it.
That's part of it, okay.
Right, so we, to, to build this system, you know, we had to, you know, reach out to a consultant to protect our interests, sort of like a known as project manager. So that way, we could get the right system, because this is a big project, it's very important, so...
And I'm assuming this cost, I'm not sure, assume, but is this cost equally split between the three towns, or are we leading the point on it, or how is that?
It is equally split between the three towns.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
So what are we making a motion for, because wasn't 135 appropriate?
Yeah, that was appropriate.
I can no longer sign...
It's appropriate, I have a town meeting vote.
Yeah.
But, and we could theoretically go, you know, right along, but I want a confirmation vote that the Board of Selectmen's $135,000, I'm not doing it on my authority, chief's not doing it on his, I want it on your authority.
Yeah, no, absolutely, it's the way it should be, but...
The signing of the contract, department heads can no longer sign contracts of this magnitude, only the board can.
Correct.
So I want to make sure that we're living with, within the rules of what we're supposed to be doing, so...
It's nice that we're being kept in the loop, let's be honest.
Well, I, I think you knew that this was coming.
Yeah.
It's just that you have just recently put out a rule saying that we're not to sign contracts of this magnitude, so, that's, you know...
Is there a motion to approve the $135,000 requested?
Well, I need you to sign the contract.
Sign the contract, is there a motion to approve the...
Sign the contract, this has already been approved by...
Sorry.
I just need you to sign the contract.
Sign the contract, which means we're authorizing the signature.
So move. Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And I, I've got to abstain from the vote, I've got a business relationship with one of the com, I was not involved in this process at all, at all, at all, but...
Okay, you can abstain from the vote, you can sign the contract.
Yes, I can.
Okay, once the board has voted, you still can sign.
They voted for it, but I just, I've got a conflict with one of the companies.
So we presented the contract at some point shortly?
I believe you have it.
We have it for your signature this afternoon.
Right.
Excellent.
Okay.
All good?
Thank you, chief, yeah, I think there's more here.
There's more for you. All we, we're gonna do the...
Oh, wait, there's more.
Wait.
Item two on the new business, acceptance of the Acceptance Center bid, police chief, so this is, we're beginning the process of finding your replacement. We went out to bid for three, the three companies submitted bids to interview the potential candidates for, and put them through the testing and...
The assessment.
The assessment center.
All the steps, the Assessment Center, we've got three bids, the winning bid was $6,000.
$6,449.
And apparently, this is a company we know and we like, and we're happy that they're the winning bidders, and so we are here tonight to accept that bid.
We did, we did receive three bids. One from the internet for $35,000, one from Badge Quest, which is $6,449, and one's from Resource Management Associates at $7,500, making the winning bid, you know, $6,449.
Badge Quest.
So, I'd like the board to approve the awarding of the bid to Badge Quest.
And we know and like this company, we think they're a company that needs...
They're a very reputable company in this business.
And we're, we're ready to move forward and get the process started.
They've done a ton of work, like this, this is all the stuff that they've done in the past, I mean, it's, it goes on and on and on, so they've done it all.
The most closest community that you could verify this with is Fahaven, so Fahaven has used that recently.
But you know them, chief?
Yes, I do.
So, is there a motion to accept the winning bid?
Motion to accept the bid from Badge Quest for our Acushnet Police Chiefs Assessment Center.
And I second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, chief, for forgiveness, thank you for giving us that as soon as you could and the way you did, so the next step is we post this on HRD, I think, for three weeks, is according to our flow chart you gave us?
Yes, we will follow the flow chart, so we should be getting that posted shortly, and hopefully, we will have the Assessment Center and candidates before you in no time.
Thank you.
It looks like, it looks like this company, or the E-companies that do this kind of... It looks like, it looks like this company, or the E-companies that do this kind of work, they'll set up a orientation day for the four candidates, right, come down.
I mean, orientation.
Give them a little orientation of the process.
And then there'll actually be the test.
And then, several weeks after that, they.
It's usually pretty quick, yeah.
Okay, great, so, three weeks, we have to wait for the posting on HRD?
We will have the process started shortly.
All these fire laws and paperwork is slowing processes down, what's the hangup?
There is none, it's just to make sure that everyone's notified fairly.
Oh.
So it's, it's like anything else, we don't want anyone to, you know, be excluded, to make sure everybody's included, you know, you have to have postings, you would do that no matter.
Oh, I, I could understand if they weren't offered with another bond, or they're offered with another bond, so how can they not be notified?
It's a little faster to go through the chain.
I know, it's, that's what I'm saying.
Even if you were civil service or non-civil service, you would be posting, and you would post it for so much time, based on case law, that's all.
Thank you.
Item three on the new business, interim police chief, she puts your official last date one more time, we know, but we don't know.
It'll be November third.
November third, so, we had, we had a discussion with the chief about extending his contract, we're, we're running as fast as we can to find his replacement, but November third's gonna come quickly, if, if we don't have your replacement by November third, we've had discussions with the chief about what it would take to keep you on, on a, on a part-time basis, and we have a, and we just got this tonight, so I'm gonna suggest we're not gonna take action on it tonight, but we've got an employment contract between the town of Acushnet and you're gonna become interim chief, Michael Alves.
Yes.
So when you move from full-time chief to helping us bridge that gap, you'll, like I said, you'll title, will be interim chief, Michael Alves, and we, and this was just distributed to us, so I would suggest we, we review this for action at the next meeting, but I think conceptually, we're agreeing with, with the discussion we had, but I, I do wanna review this before we.
No problem, Mr. Cabral needs to hold it for a little bit of time, that's not an issue, so, I don't have a problem with it, Mr. Cabral.
Thank you.
Just let it ride.
So let's, I'm gonna.
You're all set. And by the way, we did our red line copy, and we made some adjustments to the contract, and we've gone back to the chief, he has approved the changes.
And there's a job description here as well?
Yeah, there's a job description, just for, make sure that I've given you everything I'm supposed to give you.
I mean, everybody just got this, right?
No, I've reviewed, I called Mr. Noble today and had some discussion.
I just got it before I came in tonight, so.
The red line change, I just looked at, but it's all.
Yeah, I just, I've got them all, but they just, they just came to me tonight, even behind the door, so.
No problem.
I've not read them, so let's.
You gotta take a speed reading course.
We're only in the middle of July, man, he's not leaving until.
I know, that's what I'm saying, I know, plenty, plenty.
He's done, he's done his job, he's put everything that he needs to do, put together for us, and keep the ball rolling, so again, I, I commend you for that, you do it as well, chief, you really.
Thank you very much.
You haven't, you haven't stopped, and I know by talking to you, that your schedule is, if you're retiring, usually when you retire, your schedule kind of peters off, and unfortunately for you, your schedule has escalated the other way, I apologize for that, there's nothing that I can do about it to stop that, but you have a lot of work on your table before you retire, and, you know, I wish it could be easier for you, but, and I can tell you that, but it's not.
It's been, it's been the same since day one.
Thank you, what I'm trying to say is, thank you for.
You're welcome.
For everything you've done in the process, and everything you continue to do, I think it's important that our taxpayers know that you're not dropping the ball, you're not, you're not running away from this problem, you're addressing it head-on like you always have, so I commend you again for that effort, too.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Item, item four on the new business, is the Lions Club special liquor license for the Apple Peach Festival, um, has it always been a full liquor license, is this, this the repeat of what we've done every year?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so this is a liquor license for Lions Club?
Right, beer and wine.
I thought this said full liquor license.
It's full, but they only serve beer and wine.
Motion to.
We've given them a full liquor license every year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, so when I'm out there drinking moonshine, nobody can say a thing about it.
An apple peach moonshine.
It's apple peach moonshine.
Motion, Mr. DeRoe, second?
I second, yes.
Second, any discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I believe this is the fortieth annual, is this the fortieth?
I think it's older than that.
I'm not sure, it's the fortieth.
I've got a bumper sticker.
I think this is the big R, fortieth anniversary, I believe.
Okay, item five is assistant treasurer-collector appointment, we discussed, we have a vacancy in our treasurer-collector office, we sought candidates to fill that position, an existing employee of the town, Karen Amarello, has expressed an interest in that position after being interviewed with the treasurer-collector, with Mr. Noble, you know, we saw the credentials of the people as well, she was offered the position and has accepted it, so I guess we're voting to officially appoint her as the assistant treasurer-collector in the town of Acushnet.
Motion to appoint Ms. Karen Amarello as the assistant treasurer-collector for the town of Acushnet, and I'll support the agreement.
Any discussion? I mean, the only, the only comment I'd make is, it's, it's nice that we're able to provide a career path within the town for existing employees, it's nice that we've got somebody that's worked for the town, that's able to move up into, into a position of higher authority.
I agree, and she's an Acushnet resident.
Congratulations, and she's an Acushnet resident, so, congratulations to Mrs. Amarello on the, on the promotion, on the.
She's the best.
Item, we vote, do we vote that, yes?
Yes.
A voter, okay. All right, item six, department year-end transfers, there's a schedule of transfers that were submitted, it's teeny tiny print, thank you.
Mr. DeRoe, if you like a larger copy.
Teeny tiny little print, I was able to make this work, though.
You know, the teeny transfers.
I don't wanna go through the. Kevin, I have a question on the last one, which is.
Mr. Gasper, they, a good explanation last meeting, the end of the year transfers, and I, and I'm perfectly willing to take it by question or go line by line, this has previously been submitted to the finance committee, but as you know, these transfers aren't final until they're approved by the board of selectmen.
And these are all year-end transfers?
All year-end.
You can transfer, you've noticed that this transfers in and out of, from, you know, it could be from the selectmen's budget, which I think we have, to the assesses' budget, it's allowable on the law now that you can do that, I think it used the law, used to state, Mr. Noble, that it's only from women in that department, that you could do it, and now they've changed that law where you can take money from Fred and.
Give it to Barney.
Use it to pay Barney, so, I mean, it's, it's, you know, it is what it is, unless the board has privilege to, I, I just have one question, it's on the sewer enterprise fund, and it says, reserve fund fifty thousand dollars, and my question is, is that reserve fund, a reserve fund transfer from the town's reserve fund, or is that a reserve fund transfer from the budgeted reserve fund?
It's a transfer from the budgeted reserve fund.
That's the whole fifty that we have appropriated?
Yes, and I've got, Mrs. Sylvia Silver here to explain that, the last bill hasn't come in.
What, though, the sewer bill from New Bedford for June has not come in yet, we usually get them around the twenty-second, I don't think we're gonna use the whole fifty thousand, I think we're gonna use twenty, but speaking with the finance director, she said, let's be on the safe side.
Let's be careful, let's not be.
Let's transfer the whole fifty, and just to make sure, because we don't know what that number's gonna be, even though I feel like it's only gonna be about twenty.
And we still, so we owe the city of New Bedford X amount of dollars, and we're under the assumption it's probably gonna run to about twenty thousand dollars, and that's coming from that budgeted reserve, so, we have an outstanding income that's supposed to be coming in against those expenses as well, so we have bills to pay to the city, but we must have bills coming in from our residents, from sewer residents, right, quarterly?
Yep, the bills just went out, the June thirtieth just, bills just went out last Friday.
Yeah.
I did, after speaking with you, Mr. Gasper this morning, I did check to see what our income coming is versus.
I'm sorry, I can't, yeah.
Because the question you asked me, is are we gonna cover our expenses with the income, the answer is yes, we will.
Yeah, I just wanted to make it clear that we're, we're using it to supplement, so the reserve, the fifty thousand, we're gonna say, we're saying fifty thousand, but, we went from appropriation to fifty thousand, only just so we have enough money, because it's the end of the year, and we don't wanna get caught, but I share it off, right, so, we went for, we took the fifty, where you're saying that your predict, prediction is roughly twenty thousand dollars, and that would require a vote from the board of selectmen, because we talked about that as well, right, Mr. Noble, that there's no expenditures from these reserve funds that are in these budgeted reserves, unless the board of selectmen vote on it, so I just wanna make that clear, that this is coming from the enterprise sewer surplus account, from that fifty thousand dollars, but we do have money coming back, so we, we're projecting that we might pay out twenty to the city of New Bedford, but we could be taking in thirty from our residents, I'll just call thirty, so there'll be a surplus there, so it's not to be alarmed, we're not sending off the alarm, we're, we're short twenty grand, and we built no new surplus, we don't know until we, we pay our bills out and we collect our receivables.
So, could this be considered like a cash flow issue, like we're just stuck?
A timing issue more.
A time, well.
I think what happened this year was, we had very, very wet weather, and we had.
Yeah, well, I was gonna talk about the water.
Yeah, so.
Go ahead, Kathy, go ahead, I'm sorry, Kathy.
No, that's okay, it's, so we, the weather this year, we, our sewer, not only what we're paying to New Bedford for sewer, went up a lot more than we predicted, but our billing went up a lot more, too, so, you know, it's equal in that sense, so it wasn't like we had a problem with infiltration or anything, except the fact that we did find a few people are taking their sump pumps and putting them into our sewer system, we caught those, we caught them in March, we found them in March, we corrected the problem, so that's made our sewer bill go back down, so we feel more comfortable with that, but with the way that the weather was, everybody's sump pumps were going since last, like, November.
But the previous, the previous infiltration problem that we did have prior to us catching it, we had a very wa, we had a very watery season, right, we had a lot of rainfall, okay, and that caused infiltration from sump pumps running more than usual, and they were pumping more, and then we went out and we, we, with a red eye, we caught a few people that were pumping into the sewer system, which you're not supposed to do, you're not supposed to discharge water into the sewer system that's unbeder, so we end up paying that, when it goes to the pumping station down on Slocombe Road, if we, we charge water in, sewer out, so, water in, water out is what you charge for sewer, so whatever you charge for water, we charge for sewer, however, if somebody's pumping, okay, unnecessary, sump pumps and, and whatever, swimming pools or whatever's landing into the sewer pipe, and it's going down to the pumping station, they're taking a reading off that sewer pumping station, we're not capturing it from our end to charge for it, but all that extra volume's going to the city of New Bedford, and they're charging us for rainfall, you follow us, and that's where infiltration comes into play, and we've done a lot of good work over the years, the board's been working on this for several years now, about infiltration, trying to stop it, so that we're not getting caught like that, and we're paying for, you know, clean water to be paid for, sewer discharge, right?
Right, question, Mr. Noble, if there were, if we don't use these funds, if they're, they'll close out into the sewer, and then we've gotta move the funds back into the reserve account?
Actually, I'd have to defer to the town council.
We want a reserve.
I think we, the board has to vote to put it back.
Okay, we want it to reserve.
That was the previous year, so, so, that was the previous year, we're talking about the previous year, not the current year.
Right.
So, there's a couple on there that we'd be talking about the current year on, and this, and, and, actually, none of these are on the current years, but, what happens is, you're gonna pay your bills, you're gonna recapture that money.
Twenty, right? The current, this is all fiscal nineteen?
But the budget has fifty every year, and we never expended any money, so what we're saying is, we took the fifty, we're only gonna use twenty, but then when we make our money back in, if we bring in thirty, all of it's being captured, and you're actually putting ten back in, and you're revolve, your, your new budget's already got the fifty back in, so your surplus is already back in, nothing really came out of surplus, so that's how.
We want a reserve.
It's like, it's like revolving in the way.
I see the account.
The only way it's gonna, the only way it would be able to take away from our reserve is if the explanation that Miss Silva gave us and said, we're paying the city twenty, and we only collect fifteen, we're out five, where we use five thousand out of last year's reserve, but it doesn't, it ain't gonna do anything, it's just taking it out of our reserve, so, the fifty will still be in our budget, you're just gonna have no money going into surplus that for the last fiscal year, and you've used five thousand dollars of surplus, is all that's telling you.
Could I ask a question on a few others, Mr. Noble?
Sure.
The, and this is a conversation we have on the side, so let's, let's put it on the table, the, the transfer from the reserve fund to the police positions, I know we had an article at town meeting.
Yes, we did not use all of the article to do this, we did it from within the budget.
Okay, so, did we use any of that article?
We did use about ten grand of that article.
All right, ten, so plus ten, plus sixty-nine, so that article, what happens to that article?
It will, if we don't find another problem, it will flip back to free cash.
It will flip, so, but we've gotta, we've gotta cancel out that article, because we've talked about articles.
It does that automatically, yeah, I mean, that, that's an option that I can exercise.
So I thought we talked about some.
But it's one that we don't use, usually I close an article within two years if we haven't used it, but in this particular case.
So we found some articles that have been there forever, right?
If we haven't used it, we'll close it up, yeah, generally speaking, I mean, the town account notifies me, I go back to the departments involved, we decide whether they stay open or don't stay open, luckily, I've been a recap of what forms, what numbers still exist, what the balance is, and what the intended purpose is, if they haven't been used by this time, the oldest article we have was one for the town, but it's about five years old, but the project is still in process.
Okay.
So, I'm not closing the account, but, for example, one of the things that I will close is, we replaced the boiler in this building, and so we're gonna close out that article, because it's long gone, so.
Yeah, so, I mean, you, you hold them, we talked about an expiration date of two years on an article, if somebody, if somebody makes an appropriation, if it's a bond that makes an appropriation in two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty comes, that article's still open, and they have, they've only expended ten out of the twenty thousand dollars, and, you know, what are you waiting for, you couldn't need the money that bad, return it back to the general fund, and then you come back for another out of hand, as well, it should be.
I mean, sometimes, I'm sorry.
I just wanna continue on with it, pensions, Soil Board has twenty thousand dollars.
Where do?
Up here, line nine.
Number nine.
Number nine, okay, we move from, from those accounts.
Yep, from pensions.
To the salaries overtime.
I mean, we're trying to catch up with our pension fund.
No, it's money not expended in those accounts.
Okay.
Okay, so we're taking the money that was not expended in here, and moving it over to the salaries overtime and EMS. Yes.
So we've met our plan to get money over to the pension, even though pension plan's underfunded?
Well, we're, we have.
We're funding.
It's pension system is what's been, we're in a lot better shape with pensions, they don't.
This is money that was budgeted for pensions, but we didn't expend out of that account, correct?
But our pension plan's not fully funded, correct?
That's correct.
And we've got a plan to catch up on that, correct?
Yes, and we are in compliance with that plan. Yes, and we are in compliance with that plan.
And we're in compliance with the plan, but we're not at a hun- our pension plan's not a hundred percent-
It won't be a hundred percent until twenty twenty-seven.
Okay, so that, that's, the question is, I just wanna make sure, when we're-
Yep.
We got twenty thousand, we said we were putting in our pension plan, it wouldn't have hurt us to put it in our pension plan. That's just-
We're paying, to give you a basic idea, we're paying an extra million dollars a year-
Yeah.
Right.
To catch us up on our pension.
And the last is the seventy thousand dollars we're moving to health insurance?
Yes, 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 in two, as in, in, uh, in twenty nineteen, that would be item number seventeen.
Seventeen.
We're moving in seventy thousand dollars because we had more people sign up in open enrollment than anticipated.
Okay.
And unfortunately, we don't-
And when's, when is open enrollment?
Usually in the, in the spring, and we have a period of time which we have to do open enrollment.
It's like five employees though, isn't it? It's sixty percent shared town base.
Perfect, yep. And then, and they, and I have to be honest with you, they all came from the school set of the town.
Oh, we've realized some real, we have some-
Oh yeah, actually, the neat part of it is, that even based on these enrollments, we're gonna save eighty-five thousand dollars in health insurance, assuming that we don't get any more signups, but, um, we're gonna save eighty-five thousand dollars this year in, in health insurance premiums. So, really sort of happy, I'm not happy about this, but it is what it is.
Any other questions on the request to transfer?
I do not know.
Um, is there a motion to approve the request to transfer?
So moved. I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
In favor, excuse me, any opposed? Uh, okay, that passes. Transfers. Item seven is the signing of the fire EMS department contract.
I'm gonna ask you to table that, we did find some errors in the final contract, and I have a-
I thought it was on the agenda two-
It was, and we didn't get it in time, now we got it, and I found errors in it. Uh, yes, I have errors in it.
Oh, that was distrib- yeah, I'm sorry, that was just distributed, yes, okay.
Yeah.
We, we approved it, we acceptually-
We have a, we have a memorandum of understanding.
Yep.
Which is final, we can operate on that. The final contract came in from the attorneys after the last meeting.
Okay.
In reviewing it-
You distributed that to us, yes.
And, and, well, I found errors in it, and I worked with the chief of the union, I still have to go with Mr. Gasper, because it's still his contract, and make sure he's in agreement that our interpretation of what was wrong is correct. And if he agrees that it is, we can produce a final black line version, we'll present it back to the board for final approval.
So let's put that on the agenda for me.
When we, when we went back to the union, and we had to copy up, of everything, put that together in one contract, to keep it all nice and neat and tidy all, we found some discrepancies between what we had talked about in meetings with the union, and what they had discussed, so we went back, we sat back down with the union members from the fire and EMS, we had some dialogue with them, there's, there's a little bit of, uh, misinterpretation of hours or days and things of that age, because we're going on a twenty-four hour shift, so it's just, it's a little bit of, I would say, I'll say just cleaning up, Mr. Noble and I, and the chief Gallagher have a meeting next week.
The last go around was, management and the union agrees against the attorney.
So should we read what you sent us, or is that gonna be changed again?
I wouldn't bother to read it until I tell you it's fine to read.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
So let's, let's hold that till the next meeting?
Yeah, that, uh, Mr. Gasper and I have an appointment early next week to resolve it.
Okay.
And I think we'll resolve in what, what do you figure, Kevin, an hour?
Thirty minutes, forty-five, yeah, maybe an hour, maybe it'll take an hour if you buy me a coffee.
I'll buy you a coffee.
Item, item seven, Department of Public Works, Mrs. Silva's here, do you wanna approach the podium? Uh, we had two items, we've got sewer privilege fee assessment approval, and both are gonna pick up.
The, um, well, sewer privilege fee. Privilege fee is a little bit different than the betterment fee, as most of you know. The betterment fee is assigned when we actually do a sewer extension project, so if we have thirty houses, we tie them all in, they all get assessed for the betterment. What this is, is a privilege fee, so what happened was, this property did not get assessed a betterment fee when sewer was put down the street, because it was not considered a buildable lot at that time. So since then, the rules have changed, and now it's allowed to be buildable. Um, the building inspector has approved it, so he can build a house on this property, so now we have to assign a privilege fee. I did check with the assessors office to make sure there was never a betterment fee that was not, so I went with our lawyer, he does this, he does the privilege fee, and, um, this is the one we came up with.
And this fee only relates to, we're not adopting a townwide policy, this privilege fee only applies to this lot?
No.
And, no?
No.
Well, we have, we have policies in place, so you have a betterment policy, and you have a privilege fee policy. The privilege fee policy is, is twofold, this is a, an easier one, because it's a property that was never put on a betterment, so you just go back, and the privilege fee, you're allowed under, under law to do ninety percent of what the betterment was, okay?
So this, if this property had been approved, they would've paid this fee at the time, the sewer law was-
They would've paid more.
Right.
They would've paid more.
As a betterment fee?
As a betterment fee, they would've paid more. So the law allows ninety percent, which is what the town adopted years ago, which is the most we can charge as a privilege fee to now tie in, because the sewer line's already there, we're not doing any work, they're just tying into our, and they also pay obviously permit fees when they do this. There's another privilege fee that if a house becomes a two-family house, so all of a sudden they knock it down, they build a two-family, or they add on an addition, then they're allowed to charge a hundred percent of what the betterment fee was under that privilege fee. This is not that situation, this is just one house.
This is, this is a one-off on-
So this happens every once in a while.
Okay.
We have somebody that all of a sudden comes along, or maybe there's land that was never developed, back in the day, they thought it would never be developed, and now they've decided it can be, and that might be, something comes up and does, does approve it.
And this is about ninety percent of what they-
It is ninety, exactly.
If it had been buildable five years ago, this is about ninety percent of what they would've been assessed at that time.
Right.
So this was a piece of property that was just subdivided, and now a new home is going up?
Nothing was ever put on this property. It was just land, and at the time, the, that the sewer was put in, it was deemed not to be a buildable property, they thought it would never be built on, and, um, obviously-
You know why?
I'd have, the building inspector would have to answer that. So then, it now is allowed to be buildable, um, it's gone through all permits to the town.
Fell through the cracks.
I don't know what's up with that. I did talk to Mr. Merritt today, and he just said the, told me what was going on there, I did check on that property with the assessors office as well, there's been a building on it for, since nineteen seventy-one in this family, so there's already something that existed, and for some reason now it's one point nine acres. It doesn't fall within the, it doesn't fall within the new business residential village district for the ten thousand square foot lot, so it's got nothing to do with that. I, I have to, you'd have to go and examine what's really going on here, to see why it wasn't a buildable lot then, and why it is now. Or maybe it was a buildable lot back then, because it's one point nine, and we have a criteria of sixty thousand square feet, which roughly puts you at one point four acres, so there's plenty of room there to do it. Um, I talked to Mr. Merritt, and he said that the owner, um, wants to put sewer, and I said, "He's probably got enough room to do a septic system unless he didn't perk," right? And he has to be, he's forcing the sewer, he says, "No, he wants to go with sewer," I said, "Okay, that's fine," but they are putting a double-wide mobile home on the property, um, the permit has been approved, so I don't know what's, if it wasn't buildable back then, and it is buildable now, I don't know about that. Um, I just know that there's one point nine acres there, and there was a small building already on the property, and the owner now is, is looking to put a double-wide or modular home type style thing on it, and he's looking to put, um, sewer betterment. So for the sake of discussion tonight, gentlemen, is whether or not we're gonna approve the privilege fee. Um, not so much of whether it's really a buildable lot, and if it was in the past, it wasn't in the past, I think that's something else we could talk about, but-
Feels like it fell through the cracks, though, doesn't it?
It does.
Sometimes, sometimes, this, like Ms. Silva just said, sometimes, when the sewer projects are done, there's, there's vacant lots that had been built on, are deemed not buildable lots, for whatever reason, back in the, you know, early two thousands, somebody said, "Oh, it's not a buildable lot," right? And you got a hair across the, you know, so they just say, "Oh, it's not a buildable lot," well, okay, so you don't get charged a betterment. And then, lo and behold, you look at the property, and say, "Yeah, of course you can build on that lot, it meets all the criteria."
One point nine acres, unless it was wet.
Well, I mean, that'd be like a third of his property being wet, and more than a third for one point nine and one point four, so whatever. I talked to Jim today, and I said, "Okay, sounds good to me," and, um, you know, it is one sewer, so I'll make a motion to approve, to approve the sewer privilege fee in the amount of fourteen thousand, eleven dollars and fifty-seven cents.
And I'll second that.
Further discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Gasper, yes?
Aye, yes, I'm sure.
Okay, that passes?
I just assume if I make a motion.
Yeah, it's formality more than-
I know.
Um, okay, pickup, please.
So I know that, um, all of you would like to do one free one at some point I talked to.
It's free.
We're providing that money, right?
First, I wanna say that Waste Management is going to do this starting August first. Not for free, they're gonna do it, um, that they can call, a resident can call Waste Management, or go online, and they can actually schedule a pickup. So those people that have a hard time getting it to the recycling center, because you can still use our recycling center, if they have a hard time, or just don't have a vehicle to get it there, they can call Waste Management, they're gonna charge twenty-eight dollars flat fee for whatever item they wanna take, they will not take appliances, but the recycling center will, so just a reminder, everybody, we can still take those. But they're gonna start August first, so if somebody calls and says, "I would like a couch to get picked up," you know, we have some elderly residents, I'm gonna refer them to Waste Management, they'll start doing it August first, they're gonna do it every week, as long as they have enough to pick up. If not, they'll do every other week, they'll, they'll, they're gonna take it, so they'll take as much as they can take in one truck that week, and then they'll start, um, making a schedule for the following week.
So, we, we can't do the traditional, I think when we allocated money for bulky item, we, we pictured the traditional, a bulky item pickup, where everybody just, um, puts stuff out, and a truck comes by and takes it all, and twenty-eight dollars an item, that, that adds up really, really quickly. So I think we, we allocated some dollars out of the town budget to-
Thirteen grand.
Right, so that, you, that, what you're saying is, you wanna do one, you wanna do one pickup that they, we're not gonna charge them for that?
Yeah, we'd like the traditional, the traditional model of a bulky-
Now, you gotta remember, that's only gonna be one time for the year.
Yes.
So that's why, I think it's good, we have this, so say-
And we do, we do like the, I mean, I took advantage of it myself, where I went to, went to your office, bought a pass-
You just need a bigger truck.
And I need a bigger truck, I had a little truck, I need a bigger truck, and I bought the truckload of stuff, and brought it over to the town barn, and they took all the stuff, and-
Right, which I think we need, I think we need things for the, I think we need things the whole year. What you, what you're talking about is the one time, well, the one time that we'd like to do it for everybody for free, which is either gonna be a fall or a spring, because most people, we get ninety percent of the calls in March and April at the DPW saying, "Hey, you guys doing pickup this year?" So, then I spoke with Waste Management, um, they took over Faholland, they took over five towns, so they are still getting all their ducks in a row. I've talked to them about doing this one-time pickup, they will do it, and not till the spring, because they do not have the people, the trucks right now to do it. They will do it for one week, they will not do it on a weekend, they will do it Monday through Friday, and it'll be every day pickup, so for example, if Slocombe Gasper has his pickup on Tuesday, then then that's the day you're gonna have to put your items out for free. So every, so they're gonna do it, so whatever your pickup day is for trash and recycling, is gonna be the day that they'll take it free, and whatever we pick, it'll be-
Tuesday, and then all but a riot. No, you can't do that, because when we discuss it, when the board discusses, Mr. Cabral, you remember this conversation, you were in favor, and I was in favor of it. Um, and, and I like, I like the service that if you make a phone call, and you say, "I reside at, you know, one twenty-two Main Street, and I, I have a couch to pick up," "Okay, no problem," they'll stop, they'll, you call them up and say, "Okay, one twenty-two Main Street," they'll pick up my couch for twenty-eight bucks, which, you know, it's expensive, but to some people, they'll spend the twenty-eight bucks not to go out of the house and do anything, right? I think that Mr. Cabral has alluded to, is we, we made the appropriation at town meeting, I think there's a sense that we're looking to kick that off, and keep the thirteen grand, and not do that service, I think, I think it's, it's left for discussion for the board. I, I'd like to continue that, and do that one-time event cleanup thing, have you pick up, and then, and every budget season, we should be discussing whether or not now, I don't, I, we talked about it before, I don't think it's something that you do every year, but we haven't done it in a couple of years, so we said, "Let's do it again," and, and you know, some, the argument is, is some people use it, some people don't, why am I paying for it? Well, guess what, you're paying for thirty-two thousand million dollars of the budget anyway, so what's the difference that you're not using, right? I don't use the school department, but I'm paying sixteen million dollars for the school department's budget, right? It's part of my taxation, and I have to eat that, and I'm gonna eat that, right? Um, I could be, I could go on and on, building department, conservation, but I don't use any of that stuff, but I'm still paying for it, right? So, I think it's, it's great that now we'll have that service, that you can make the phone call, but I still think that that appropriation at town meeting, the people voted it, there was actually some residents that got up and, and talked about it, and wanted it. I think it's something that we committed to, and I'm not willing, willing to retract from that, because I pushed and promoted it. Um, I think we need to offer that to us, the service to our customers for, you know, for this time around, and maybe we don't do it next year, and we let a year float, and we go with that program, where we just say, we, we put it out on the website, Mr. Noble puts a lot of different things on the website, he can work with you to put that new recycling program, if you have something to pick up, and you don't wanna bring it yourself. I mean, let's face it, there's a lot of people out there that don't have that, they might have a hand at their house, because their next-door neighbor's gonna help them, but sometimes the next-door neighbor's not jumping in the truck to go to the DPW, the garage, and I'll, I'll be honest with you, we're, we're man down there with one guy, things out, stoned and everything else, he's running around like a chicken with his head cut off, he can't be helping everybody.
Right.
So, I, I, you know, I understand that that's a great program to have, so we'll implement that program, I think it's great that it's being offered, but I think we gotta, we still gotta commit to our bulky item pickup the one time, and it'll be for future discussions with the board of selectives, right?
Yes.
I'll go, just, I'm sorry, Mr. DeRoz, did you have something?
No, so I guess the point we're getting to is that bulky item pickup will end up being next year, next spring.
I talked to Waste Management, they said, "Yeah, they can," they, they said the earliest they'll do is the spring, so if we're definitely going forward, I'll get some dates from them, and then you guys can, all of you can discuss it.
That kinda spaced the spring, but anyway.
So, just wanna, just wanna say, just to, just sort of reiterate what, what was said here, and I, I love the fact that we've got the on-demand, that people can get rid of something, and, and, you know, go, go pay a fee, and, and bring something to the town barn, I think it's great that we've added that feature. I, I do like the traditional bulk, bulky item pickup model, where people just put out whatever on the curb, and, and half of it disappears, you come out of it. Half of it disappears anyway, so Waste Management only gets half of what gets put out, but I think, I think the residents appreciate that, I think it's nice to do that once every-
So often.
So often, and it's probably been five years since we've done that last.
It's been a couple.
We did, we did something, the last time we did it, we had to deliver it to the town barn, and I, I took part in that, but, you know, the true curbside bulky item, it's been a while since we've done that, so if you could explore-
Oh yeah, absolutely.
Doing that, and-
Absolutely.
We've got some money reserved for it, and that's what I think what we anticipated.
Yeah, we do, we do.
I did, I did know, I did know that you were thinking of it, so that's why I talked to Waste Management, and unfortunately, like I said, they're so swamped right now.
Spring's fine, spring's fine.
It's gonna have to be spring.
Spring's fine.
My other, the other reason I like Waste Management, or the recycling, is for people, especially people who are moving out of town, or just moved into town, we get a lot of those phone calls of people who are trying to get rid of just stuff at that time, so it's a great program to have for the whole year. But I agree with all of you, that, you know, the residents who are here year-round, and it's nice to offer it for them once, so especially in the spring is great, we get a lot of phone calls in the spring.
Everybody says we have to do it every year, but it's been, like Mr. Cabral said, it's been a couple, three years since we've done it.
Yeah, I think, I think it's been three.
It's been a couple, three anyways, since we've done it, Mr. Rockliff was on the board back when we did it, and it was a big thing for him in, in doing it, and you know what? We, we, we talked about it, so that we weren't going crazy with the expense, because it's, it's, it's quite the tonnage, we said we would limit it to three or five pieces per household, so we, the comment was made is, "Well, we don't want Suzie Q and Barbecue to come to my house and give you ten pieces from New Bedford and Dartmouth and Westport," well, I get that. I totally understand that, right, because there are some people that'll abuse the system. So we limit the amount of bulky item pickups that you can come and get, and if it's five pieces at your house, it's five pieces per household, that's all we do. And we advertise that before we do it, a month, thirty days, sixty days before we do it, and let everybody know, we're only picking up up to five items off your yard, so don't put more than that, end of story.
Sounds good.
Could I just ask a quick question? Um, how are you finding the transition from Holland to Waste Management, has it become a little smoother?
They did, um, an excellent job, right from the beginning, there were no bumps, which surprised me, and I think all of you, I think I spoke to all of you. We had a week or two that they changed the recycling drivers, we had a really, really bad week.
Right.
I think you all remember that, um, that's been taken care of. We have a better, um, way of communicating with Waste Management, myself, and Anne, who works in the office with me, in the fact that we have certain people we can contact, so if anybody out there doesn't have their recycling picked up, we, first of all, we're asking, please leave your barrels out till seven or eight at night, because it is still on your driver, he is still learning the route, so it's taking him longer, but he's staying out there till he finishes. They're also communicating with us of who did not have a barrel out, so when we get a phone call, then they're telling us, these locations haven't had a barrel, so we already know that. If they miss yours, if they miss you, feel free to call Waste Management, if you don't feel like you're getting anywhere, call me, or, or the office, and we'll make sure it gets picked up.
Good.
It's going well now, we've worked out the bumps, we have a couple of new people we're working with, and now it's great.
Excellent.
I think it's over.
Very good. Ms. Silva, anything else, Mr. Noble?
Just a quickie, can you give us, while we've got the whole board here, a little update on the quality of our recycle? Because that has always been an issue about what-
We're doing that, we're doing that at my house.
I brought the sign over on Vergris.
Thank you for that question, Mr. Noble, because we did just have a couple of, um, bad recycling, um, trucks going. They do give me an email, they let me know what's going on, seems to be plastic bags again, that seems to be everybody's favorite.
Not us.
Okay, thank you.
It's not like a brawl.
It's not like a brawl, it would-
So, if everybody can just remember, you know, bags can not go in there. At some point, I'm gonna bring over a little thing and show you guys, because I was very surprised, I was just, I keep reading and reading and reading. The other thing that's, that surprised me was forks, you know, plastic forks, plastics, brooms, and straws. I thought, oh, they can go in recycling, they cannot, because they're too small, and they get caught in the machines.
Oh, I didn't know that.
I did not even, I, I'm gonna tell you that.
You're all sitting there, and you're like, wow, really?
Because I thought the plastic thing goes, so I think, um, you know, actually, um, somebody from the library was just over talking to me, and they said, "Hey, would you come over and talk to us about recycling, and do a talk?" And I said, "Sure."
How do we let the residents, how do we?
We send flyers, she sends, she does a great job sending out, we just got one, a couple, one month or two ago, she gave everything. Do not do this, and do this.
We're trying, we're trying to, we're getting people.
You gotta rinse out the food, you know, the-
Yeah, food can, not that food.
You remember the old days, you had to clean everything out, you were back to that, you gotta-
And also, just, uh, wire hangers, wire hangers, anything that tangles gets caught in the machines, so, um-
They need to redesign the machines, man, pretty soon we won't be recycling anything but cardboard again.
I know.
Well, the problem is, it goes both ways.
Oh, wait, we can't do that, it's got pizza sauce on it.
That's right.
I know, I heard this story.
But here's the other key, if you go the other way, you put too many recyclables into your trash, you're gonna get penalized.
Right.
So we really gotta get better, it's equally a sin to put non-recyclables in the recyclables as it is to put recyclables in the non-recyclables.
It's all about mother nature, right? You have to respect mother nature, so.
And Waste Man, just one other thing, is Waste Management will not pick up a recycling bin if it looks like it's ninety percent full of trash. We had an issue, they will notify me of the house, who did it, and they did not pick it up.
And they should.
So.
I mean, it's true that we could get, like, if Bedford's gone out and looking at people's trash, I'd rather not.
Right.
But, I mean, if we have to-
They do do that, too.
Yeah, they do.
Oh, they have.
So, we have this-
Cops, I don't know.
They have trash police.
Trash police.
We have this sign, it's been over at the library for six months, um, any suggestions on where we get a lot of, load of, uh, traffic that we could put this sign up?
I actually ordered, I'm, I'm getting two new posters, because I was talking to, um, the town clerk's office, and Mrs. Levanti suggested we put something right in front of hers, because she does get a lot of people. So we're gonna put something right there, yeah, I can put that over there for now, too, because she has a lot of people coming and going. Any suggestions? I love suggestions, I'm open to suggestions. I go every quarter to...
How stable is that? Can you put it, put it...
Probably wouldn't go outside.
I'd be afraid of the weather.
There's not much weight to it.
You think?
Throw a big sandbag on it, I suppose.
You can use it on your canoe as a sail.
But made that in my basement.
All right. Mr. Silver, anything else?
Oh, that's it.
Gentlemen, anything else?
No, I don't, thank you, Kathy, you've done great work.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you for the support with the recycling. We're good, man.
Town administrators report, Mr. Noble.
For the next meeting, we finally have a deal with ECA Solar. So for the next meeting, I will be giving you a contract that has been approved by town council and now needs your approval if you wish to go forward.
Would they come in and talk to us?
They will come in and talk to us.
ECA Solar?
ECA Solar, that's the townwide consortium where we buy energy.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
No presentation to you next meeting, we'll have the vetted document from the lawyers, so that'll be in your kit for next meeting. In addition...
If it's this thick, can we get it more than three or four days before the meeting?
I can give it to you tonight.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Probably a good idea if we could review it, just how big is it?
Twenty-seven pages, double-sided.
You should give it to us.
That's one. Two, we're finally in negotiations with Comcast, and I have the requirements of what they want us to do for public hearings and for presentation to them for the demand on cable, so...
The what?
The demand, in other words, the demand for programming, the demand for, you know, public channel, the PEG channel, and you have to demonstrate need.
What, for what? What channel are you talking about?
The town channels, eighteen, nine.
Nineteen, nine.
Yeah, so we have to actually prove that we still have a need for that, so...
Can't they watch themselves on TV?
No, and we actually have to do a public hearing and take testimony. So I have a list of those things that will be in your next kit, and I would, I appreciate some assistance in going down the checklist and getting it done. Most of it's frankly formality, you know, and even they admit that they don't see much active participation, but it is part of the cable bill in Massachusetts, you have to go through these steps, and it has not been updated, so we're going to go through the steps because that's what's required.
Can you let them, can you let them know that part of the problem is them? Because last night, when I think I flew by channel eighteen, it says Super Micro and is going for about two hours.
That's our fault.
Well, we spent some money on upgrades, what's going on?
So if you'd like, I'd be delighted to have Mr. Loeb come in and explain that to you.
Oh, that would be, whatever you want to do, but we need to fix that. I mean, that's ridiculous that a system's acting like that, spending thirty-seven thousand dollars, I think we did.
Better than the fact that the quality that we can put on YouTube is better than the quality I can put on Comcast?
The kids...
There and there runs a problem.
The kids do a great job.
Comcast has agreed.